Gather at this town council meeting to see if we're able to feel the need to serve. May that my spirit will guide and direct us, help us to be able to understand those things that we talked about and to be able to make decisions. As good land that we live in and for all the blessings that we have, which joy and sweetness in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. All right, so today we will have a regular town council meeting, the 12th of November, and we like to thank all those in the town that really made our Remembrance Day memorable. And thank you, Councillor Holt, for your seeing. And please pass on our thanks to all your staff and to Kami also for the very good job she did. And of course, our media, thank you, Corey, for being there too. And so we recognize Corey McCarthy for Channel 32, important service to our town. We call a meeting to order, we have an agenda, so we need a motion to approve it. Councillor Brown?
To approve the agenda of 12th of November, 2019.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And just for those who are watching the proceeding, we are excusing Councillor Salt, who is on family business, and Councillor Van Gooch, who is recovering from a little bit of a surgical procedure. We wish them both well. So we do not have any delegation today, so we're going to go right straight into item five, the adoption of the minutes. Jill has made a couple corrections to them, and so thank you for doing that. The regular meeting of council, we need to have those minutes approved. Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to approve your minutes of October 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Then there was the organizational meeting, October 22nd, of the same day we need to approve Councillor Holt.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting of October 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No questions. All in favor? Thank you. All right. So let's go into item six. By law, policy, we have a policy F 20-7, is the fees and charges for different services that we offer in a town. So we looked at that last week. Do you have any comments or concerns or heard anything from the public? If so, it's the right time to discuss it.
I do have just a quick question.
Councillor Holt, go ahead.
On a child rate on a single pass for single parents, that's a new charge? Were they just paying the same as everybody else before, or?
In fact, it is beneficial to those who are with single-parent family. I think it's a good move.
Now, that was the purpose behind it then.
Yeah, I think it's a very good move.
Because we had...
Councillor Brown?
We had person rec. We talked to Doug Sanders and Randy, and they said that they had had not really complaints, but parents that had brought it up and asked if it was a possibility, because we have quite a few single parents out there, and we felt that it was reasonable.
Okay. So thank you for that explanation. If we don't have any concern, we can approve by resolution that policy. So, Councillor Brown, would you like to do so?
Sure. I make a motion to approve policy F 20-7, fees and charges, for the 2020 year.
Budget year.
Budget year.
Okay. Thank you very much. A question? No? All in favor? Thank you. So this one is passed. Appreciate that. The next one will require only a first reading at this time. So it's draft by law 1649H, electricity distribution by law. As you know, from time to time, we need to kind of review our rates and reestablish what is going to be charged for distribution at this point. This is what we're looking at. Kevin is the one who advises on the best possible move to make sure that we don't drift away from what the 40s rates are around us, because the whole idea was to not be above them, but to be competitive with those rates. So there are a few changes that have been made. If you want to see what it represents in terms of impact, there is a table that was provided to you. And now, of course, I might not find it fast enough, but maybe I will.
Two or less.
There it is. All right. So for, if you look at the small table, that looks something like this. Okay? All right. So you can see that what Kevin did is compare us with a 40s rate, which is in the Carstens County for electrical. And so in order to do some adjustments, some minor adjustment, it would change a residential distribution by $2.73 per billing. For the small commercial, it will be a little higher because of the level of consumption that they have. It would be $15.83. The one who stand to have a rebate, or a bit less than what they used to, is the large commercials, and we kind of knew that in the past.
You mean the medium commercial?
No, the large, the medium commercial, sorry. We kind of knew that they were paying a lot more than what the 40s rate was. We kind of knew that it needed to come down sooner or later. And maybe now is the right time to kind of give them the breaks they deserve. So those are the figures that are there. Any comments? Any concerns? If you don't have any, I would suggest then that we adopt a first reading only by way of motion. Councillor Brown?
I move first reading of bylaw 1649H, the electrical distribution by law.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Those are small adjustments, really. And I appreciated the work Kevin did on that in order not to really create a big gap for us. All right. So let's go on to seven, other business. The agricultural society request, it's a very interesting request, and I'm going to let Councillor Drew, who is now in charge of this department portfolio, talk to us.
I was supposed to go to an AGM meeting, and it got canceled because of their financials weren't ready, but I actually talked with Mark Higgy. And when they had their AGM last year, there was a large group there who wanted to, I guess, control or maybe dissolve the Ag Society, because they felt that we, as a town council, are going to use that land and building for our rec center. So there's a lot of angst in this group of people that are using the Agro Dome. And so the request is, is that we write a letter stating that we have no intentions of taking that land and...
Okay. So if I understand properly, Councillor Drew, what they really want, they want a letter from the town that would secure for them the use of that property for four years, three years, five years, whatever, in order for them to maybe do capital investment or repairs? Or is that what the intent is?
I don't understand all of it, because I had a short conversation, but they've, they want to put some money into, the Ag Society wants to put some money into a few different things, and so they just want some reassurance from us that in the next three or four years that we're, you know...
Well, anybody who wants to have a business plan needs some security, no doubt. Councillor Brown, maybe you can help me with that?
Yeah. So it was my understanding, so in the last year, they got money from the government to put back into the Agro Dome to make it more energy-friendly. And so they put in new waters, new, so they're starting to put money into it.
Capital expenditure.
Exactly. And so I wasn't part of that conversation, but I can only speak from the two other years I was on. And in the last year, they definitely are putting more money into it, like I said, and so I guess they're feeling nervous again. They go through bouts of feeling nervous about their, as soon as people start discussing that our rec center is going out there, they get worried that they're going to be yanked and put somewhere else, because they physically don't own the land, nor do they own the building.
Yeah. And I would say, from a business perspective, I would be as nervous as they are. And so I believe if we own the land, then we owe them the courtesy to let them know if we are going to allow them to operate at least for three years, four years, whatever that is, to do that. Is that what you would propose, Councillor?
That's what I would propose.
What are they looking at? Three years, four years, five years?
Oh, I think they'd probably like a five-year, well, yeah, maybe even ten, but I think for us, I think we can probably give them a five-year...
This may or may not be related, this, but in light of the ICF negotiations ongoing, and I'd like to table this for a month until we know a little bit more about what's going on with the ICF. I don't believe a month is going to make or break anything.
No.
No, and I'm not sure when their AGM is. They just kind of wanted it for their AGM, which is...
Of course, I would.
Has to be before the new year, so...
And when's your next?
Twenty-four, twenty-fifth?
The end of the month.
Pretty quick here.
If I can. But in the two years I've sat on the Agro Dome board, this has been a request, but it's not like they have to have it this, like, they could have it January, they could have it February. They're, I understand they want it for that meeting. They want a lot of things for that meeting, but they might not get them. So it's not unreasonable to say we would like more councillors to be sitting at this table when we make these decisions, or waiting for the ICF, or...
Well, I don't know that the ICF will do too much, but...
The next ICF meeting is on the 25th, which is the Monday. We have council the next day.
Yeah.
That may give you a little bit more information, even to just put it off a meeting, if that's...
Yeah, I can let them know. I can let them know that we can, we can look at it after that.
I mean, you're raising a good point. We...
I just don't see the need to rush, that's all.
I agree.
Just not make or break time.
And I think with the money that they've invested, they just want some assurances that they're going to be there for the next little while.
But I think there is wisdom in that. Anybody who invests, wants to know their land they're investing on is going to be there for them, right? Of course. Okay. So it will be tabled to the next, to the next meeting. Please, thank you. And Councillor Drew, maybe you want to, to give them a sense that the 26th might be a little clearer?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next one is an interesting one. The historical society request. As you could see, there's a letter that requests $5,700 and some kind of odd dollar.
It's fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven hundred, exactly. Regarding utilities and insurance. Councillor Holt, maybe you want to talk about that? And maybe give us a little bit of a sense where we're going from here on?
Okay. I had a talk with President Blaine Jensen here a few days ago. The 2019 one, if I can deal with that first, I said, have you received any of the funds that you requested that we approved? And 2019, he said, no. I said, why not? Well, we haven't requested it yet. So I said, maybe you might want to request it.
Well, if you don't request, you don't get, of course.
So that's fine. We've already put that aside for them, and I don't know why they haven't requested it sooner. As for the second one, the letter pretty much outlines why they think they need the increase, because the assessment of that building has gone up substantially, which has increased the cost of their insurance very, quite a bit. So that, that extra fifty, up to $5,700 would cover their insurance and any other costs due to that assessment.
So here is a little bit of my questioning.
Yeah.
I mean, we have approved the 2019, and to tell you the truth, we also know that in 2020, the money is in the budget. Okay? So that is not where the issue is. The issue is the future. Where are we going from here? And considering that we are giving them a fair sum of money at this point, could they at least come and present their budget to us? Give us a little bit of a sense of what's happening?
I'm sure Blaine would be glad to. He's come and talked to us before about the whole thing. He presented their five-year plan and everything else.
But I really think we need to understand, because if they're constantly thinking that we need to provide, and they're building the budget on us providing that money, it becomes a little bit of an issue.
I think they're only building, I think the only thing they're wanting from the town really is to cover the, the cost of the insurance and the utilities, I believe.
But is there a time where, because they are a society independent of the town with a building that is theirs, is there a time where they see themselves maybe lowering that amount, or being able to lower that amount for the town? Those are discussion I would be curious to have.
Personally, I don't believe that's possible. They don't bring in a lot of money, and that building's very expensive. If we remember back 10 or 12 years when I was on council, I think I was on council then, they bought that building from the town for a dollar.
Yes, I remember that.
But I'm not so sure. Again, I could be wrong. It's a struggle, any museums having struggles to make ends meet, especially when you've got an older building that's not redesigned for a museum. So a lot of, a lot of their money and their costs and their expenses go into just keeping that building operating. So I don't know in the future, unless you have a person that donates a large amount of money to them, how they're going to be flush enough to kind of go on their own. And I'm just speaking for myself. Blaine Jensen might be, might talk differently about it, but...
So is this a one-time ask?
No, that's a problem.
It's a utility insurance cost is what's, is what's, is a big part of their cost. They're not spending a ton of money on frivolous things, I can tell you that. They're doing bake sales to raise money. They had a big sale yesterday. They brought in a little bit of money yesterday from donations, but it's a continuing, ongoing thing. We're all getting older on that board, and I worry about the future if we can get enough young people. We do have a couple of really hard-working young people on that board right now, but if we can, if we can keep having them come, that's the question, if we can get more involvement from the community. And the community's pretty good, but that's my concern, that's their concern, is that it's difficult to make ends meet, and if they have to come up with any insurance and the utilities, it's going to be very difficult. And there's, and as we know now, there won't be a lot of, the grants, if there are any, are going to be getting cut, so...
Well, that's what I was wondering. Are the grants in jeopardy for museums? Or what's happening there?
I really don't know for sure.
Yeah. So those are the questions that maybe would be good for Blaine to answer, and maybe whenever they are ready to present their budget or whatever, if they could come and present it to the town, give us a little bit of a sense where we're going.
Their AGM is in February, so maybe we can have them make something then.
Something to help us understand at least the future.
Yeah.
Because it was not exactly what we had expected, let's put it this way.
Hundred dollars.
Okay. So meanwhile, we need a motion to approve the request of $5,700.
Make that motion.
Okay. So your motion is to give $5,700 to the Historical Society?
2020, yes. So my, my request, my motion would be to donate fifty, $5,700 to the Historical Society to help cover their utilities and insurance.
For 2020?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we had a, I missed a budget meeting, but is this part of our...
It's in the budget.
That's fine. Thanks.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. But maybe, Councillor, you can report to Blaine, the president, that we are anxious about the future too.
Next Tuesday, I'll bring that up.
We, we need to understand where they're going with the budget. Okay? Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment about the library. They've been really concerned about...
The library?
No, the museum.
Okay.
The air quality in there has been a concern. But they were able to get a window in the basement finally opened, and I suggested to my wife yesterday, I said, why don't you get somebody in there? They've got money in a budget for some repairs.
Yes.
I said, why don't you take some of that money and get a window specialist out of Leverage to come in and take a look at that, and see if you can get one or two of those windows to open, rather than spending that money to, those windows are very expensive to replace. But I know that they used to open, so I know that somebody could get in there and get one or two of them open. Then they'll have some air circulation in there, get some screening in there so that they can, you know, have a better quality of air, and it would really help everything in there. So she never, they had never thought of that.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, that's why people...
So they said that they were going to look into that. So that's what she told me yesterday.
They can't change the structure because of the, it's sort of historical nature of the building.
Yeah.
But perhaps within that parameters, they would be able to do something.
But they definitely...
There is concern down that basement with the archives and everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's...
Quite frankly, it's a beautiful building, but not really good for a museum.
Yeah.
Which is not the room for and stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. So thank you, councillors. We've done that much good to them.
Yeah.
The Alberta Partnership, Community Partnership Grant Resolutions, those are two grants that we are requesting with two separate motions, one to approve the water application, and the other one to support the stormwater study. Okay? And so there's a regional water infrastructure study, and it is a regional stormwater study. So we need to have two separate motions. Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to support the application to the Alberta Community Partnership for the regional water infrastructure study.
Okay. So that's good. The county also is involved with that. So all in favor? Thank you very much. So the other one is a stormwater study. Councillor, who's going to do it?
I move to support the application to the Alberta Community Partnership for the regional stormwater study.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. And those studies are kind of needed, because in the future, we'll need new infrastructure. We need to kind of understand a little bit better how the water for stormwater is moving along in this community. All right. The next one is an ask. We have a community awareness evening coming up, and it is November the 20...
You got the one before that, 7D, the Rida comparisons.
Oh, yeah, okay. Let's go with D. Here, I'm not so sure that we can make tons of decisions today. You can see today that there is Southgrove, Alberta Southwest, there is the Mormon Trail, and there is a Bad Land. So maybe if you allow me, I'm going to talk about those two items, those two last items. Right now, we are in need to kind of reconvene with the four communities, and Jeff needs to be there, because he was at the onset of the creation of the Mormon Trail. We need him there to get a sense of the present and of the future. So we can't really decide too much regarding all that, except that we know that the Chautauqua will most likely not go on the way it was, so the $10,000 shouldn't be in the budget this year.
The $14,000?
No, the $10,000, the $10,000 portion of the Chautauqua.
Okay.
The $4,000 represented something like about a dollar per capita, which is a motion that had been made about three months ago from that committee to support. Except that there is new budget and are cuts, as you know, and some of the towns there are not sure that if they have to pay for Bad Land's requisition, that they also want to pay for the Mormon Trail. In other words, the Bad Land is about 75 cents per capita?
Fifty-five cents.
Yeah, 55 cents. But really, didn't we pay more than that? I thought it was more like 75 cents, to tell you the truth. You want to verify that?
Check that in our system, will we page?
Yeah, I think it's more like 75 cents. I think that's what they told us, but then we found out that it was a lot more. Anyways. And so what we need to do personally, I think, from the town, is if we are no longer going to be part of the Bad Land, which is a general consensus of those four communities, we need to give them one fiscal year notice. They have their AGM in February of 2020, I believe, something, January or February, around there. So it's time now to give them notice that we will be out. And the other towns are going to do similar, the same way. Councillor Brown?
Just a comment and a thought. I mean, since we've been in the Bad Lands, I've never, I haven't seen much information about it. I haven't seen any real benefit to our community.
Well...
I haven't seen any signage...
Lake Raymond has.
You know, or anything like that about it. I've never had, heard anybody ask me about it, what's the Bad Lands? And I see other areas that are kind of in that area, and I say, good for them. But I don't see the benefit here. That's my feeling.
Okay. I'm going to tell you, the story was at this table.
Yeah.
If I recall...
I remember.
There were quite a few that wanted to be in, I was not especially one of those. But anyway, it makes no difference. The thing is, at the end, because the three other communities were part of the Bad Land, and they were applying for grants to the Bad Land as the Mormon Trail, we, by necessity, had to be part of that in order to get the grant, except that collectively, we put more money in, that's what we got for grant, because the funding is cut for them too, and the government grants for the Bad Land is in jeopardy. Therefore, they will have less and less money, and the per capita might have to increase also. So for us, at this point, it's irrelevant for us to be part of that organization. So I would suggest we...
I would make a motion that we inform the Canadian Bad Land Society, or whatever they're called, that we will no longer be involved in their organization.
As of 2021?
As 2021, yeah. That's correct.
Within, after one fiscal year.
In the next fiscal years, yeah.
Fiscal year. Yeah.
Comments? You okay with that? Carol in favor? Thank you. All right.
All right.
And I believe the other community are doing the same. Now, regarding the $1 per capita for the Mormon Trail, well, we'll have to wait the next meeting that we have with the Mormon Trail to know where we're going here, okay? So I cannot tell you. So maybe we need to keep the $4,000 at this point in there, but not the $14,000. As for Alberta Southgrove and Alberta Southwest, I don't know if you heard Councillor Brown, but the funding from the government will not be forthcoming. There's no money anymore coming. The $100,000 that I used to receive as Rida is... The $100,000 that I used to receive as Rida is not part of the budget. So at this point, we do not quite know what's happening. We know that at Southgrove, they are asking a 25% increase for the per capita.
That'd be like 15 or 20 cents?
10 cents per capita. I don't know how well that will go with the other members. No idea. I know that there are going to be some changes imminent in at least one of those organizations. The other one, I don't know.
We talked about this at Southwest the other night. And financially, right now, Southwest is doing okay. They've got funding for another year or so. They did say that they were waiting for the government to give them a definitive answer whether there was other funding coming. But Bev Thornton seemed to think that something else was coming forward, and I don't know what that other thing is. And so we kind of decided that we would wait for this next meeting coming up in December to have another conversation and find out where we're going before we make a decision which way. And the thing about it, which we talked about, was how the benefit that we get from both Southgrove and Southwest is very positive. And Bev was concerned that these two organizations needed to be able to still function and at some level. And so we're going to talk more about it.
Without, without being able to really capitalize on grants from the government is tough.
Yeah.
We've been through that once.
Yeah.
We've been through that once about five years ago, and I can tell you, I don't know that.
They may have to scale back their operations and their expectations or somewhat. I don't know.
Well, anyways, we don't have very much answers, so let's be fair to them. And at this point, what we need to do is for the next budget, we need to, to look at that 25% increase and decide if we're going there. Councillor Salk is not there to talk about it. I know that we were one of the Rida that have the lowest per capita, and have been for the longest time. We had 35 cents for the longest time when I was there. And when changes happen, Alberta Southwest was at 50 cents and doubled it up overnight, and had have not lost their memberships because of it. What is different for us is that we're part of two Rida when most, most of all the communities are part of one Rida. So we.
And we may have to look at that, too.
And we, we are doubled in our expenses here. So I don't say that there is not value. But in time of restraint, we need to start to look at everything. So right now, do we have that increase of 25% budgeted in or not?
I do not know actually on that. I think we've got 40%, 40 cents per capita, but I don't think we've gone up to the 50.
So that means that.
Let's see what we can find back here, too.
Yeah, if you could kind of look at it, because otherwise, do we approve that now?
Let me make a suggestion. I'd really like to see councillor Salk here before we move on to that kind of a decision, because he's heavily invested into the Southgrove.
Well, I really believe that.
And I think that he needs to.
He would be the best person to kind of give us a little bit of his input.
The thing is, we belong to the two groups, and both have benefit. Which one, if there is one, that gives more benefit than the other, or are they equal benefit? I don't know. And that's why I think, I think councillor Salk needs to be in on that conversation. I know from my feelings, Southwest is a very good organization. They are very beneficial. And they're constantly getting kudos from the government people.
I know, but so.
But I'm just saying that we need to evaluate that. And if we have to leave one group, I mean, we're deciding, we already decided to leave one. If we have to, like you said, we're in a time of constraint. How, how much can we continue on?
Anyways, let's wait for councillor Salk. Councillor Salk will give you a sense that regionally, Southgrove has dealt with a lot of things that have been really beneficial for the region. You know, we, we touch on different things.
Yeah.
But sooner or later, we need to make decisions. All right, so we're leaving that alone. So the next meeting will be possibly the time where we need to look at it. But can I figure out what the amount is? Because there again, we need to give one year notice. So in that sense, it tells me that 50 cents we have to kind of accept for 2020, and we should have that amount added to the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking $700 or something like that.
All of the amounts in our budget at this point in time will need to be adjusted, increased a little bit. They're based off of, I think, our old.
Census.
Our old census numbers. And so we just, we'll need to tweak those. So we'll see that in the next budget. We'll be bringing it back on the 26th.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, so we'll leave that alone now.
Yeah.
Under seven E, Community Awareness Evening. Councillors, that is a night that Jill, councillor Court, councillor Salk, and myself have an ICF meeting. And it's a late meeting. It's going to go from four o'clock to nine o'clock, something like that, is what they're forecasting anyways.
It will be there.
So will you be able to be there, councillor Brown?
Yep.
Fine. Who else is able to be there?
What date was that? Sorry?
Monday.
It's a Monday.
Now, what is this for?
Community Awareness.
That's what they have at the civic center here, and they have all the booths.
We just have a table there, and we.
Oh, oh, you mean, how many of us can be there in attendance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a board meeting that night with.
I can be there.
Could you be there? So we'll leave it up to you two to hold the fort. The topic that will be kind of presented has to do with the solar farm, and with rec facilities, and possibly another topic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
If there's any other topic that you would like us to present or have information available there, we had talked at one point in time, having a survey of some kind for the rec facility.
Great idea.
Or something that we can have.
That's a great idea.
Give to the public. Please let us know when we can put some information together.
Yeah.
I almost felt that this was an interesting piece of information for those who want to know a little bit more. There could be on the desk, there. A copy could be made available.
So are we doing the survey, a paper survey, or are we doing an electronic survey, or are we?
Yes.
We can speak to that. So it already went out to the town of Curstyn-ish as an electronic. And so they had a bunch of people go online. If you were sent it and you went ahead and did the survey. But I think, we talked about, I think it would be a great idea to have it there and be able to.
Oh, yeah, because there's the paper, yeah.
Because we have, I mean, I've been every year to this, and we have lots of people come through, and lots of people with family, which would be people that I think is who would, we want to talk to about it. So I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Yes.
So if there's some questions, councillor Brown, because you've been on the rec board and everything, if there's any certain questions you'd like to have answered, or we can ask people if you want to let us know, and we can put something together.
Okay. So we should just have the questions, Randy has the questions from that.
Same questions.
Exactly. I would just have the same, because they were.
That same survey?
Uh huh.
Okay.
It was a great survey. And it was like super simple and streamlined, and the Parks and Rec Board kind of came up with those questions. So I think that would be the best ones to stick with.
Great.
And I know that we're going to have questions about the, the solar, what's the benefit. And so we need to have some questions and answers there for people to, so they can.
Well, they need to understand that the benefit is a long term.
Yes, exactly.
So essentially, we need to have them understand that they are not paying on their bills for it.
Right.
And then in 15 years, they'll be paid, and they start to create revenue for the town.
Yeah.
Those are the two things I need to understand. It's not costing you any taxes, and on the long run, it's going to create revenues that we cannot generate fast enough.
Yeah.
Through increased business or increased residential.
Right. Are you going to have things to give away like we've had in the past, with flashlights and pens and little screwdriver things and?
We'll have some things we can give away. We'll have our tuques again, maybe some pens and some things that we've got that we can have available, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much for that. You need to be there by six o'clock, I believe. Is that five or six, Jill?
I think it's six o'clock. Sean, can you?
And have, have your supper before you come?
Yeah, but they asked us to come by 5:30.
But normally want you there by 5:30 so that you can.
5:30, councillor.
A long meeting, huh?
Yeah.
5:30.
5:30?
Yeah, normally they are there. And please make sure that you have a chair.
What time does it open?
It opens.
What time does the public start coming?
The public, the people are still setting up.
Yeah.
Around five o'clock. So the doors are open.
Yeah.
Therefore, they are there.
Or in and out.
Right away, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, have some chairs for us.
Yeah, please.
I will be floating between the two tables, because I'm also representing FCS.
FCS, yeah.
But also, at the next council meeting, I won't be here because I will be in Edmonton representing.
Right, for the FCS.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is that the FCS conference up there?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that for us. Okay, all right. The, under item eight, Committee and Other Reports, there is a peace officer report. It gives you a sense of his busyness. He's busy.
How long does he take for a provincial appointment to?
It's here.
It's here.
He's done now, yeah.
All right.
He's done. He had the chance to go when he was first in town, to go with Geoff and meet our vulnerable on the street, so that I would not wonder who this new face is. And it's interesting, some of them commented that, oh, we liked the other guy. Well, that's good. I'm glad they liked him.
Now that he's gone, they like him.
You know. So anyways.
That's funny.
Yeah. Under eight B, you have.
I have a question before we move on.
Please go ahead.
On this. Now that he's got his designation, is he going to be doing both? I know we discussed it the other day. Is he going to be doing both the animal bylaws and the peace officer, the?
That's the intent.
Yeah, because he's going to do everything himself?
That's the intent, yes.
So we do have someone that can come in and help with cleaning the town on the weekends and evenings.
Okay.
But he will, our peace officer will be enforcing all the animal things, picking up the animals, as well as the other bylaw and provincial things.
Okay. He's going to be a busy man.
Yes.
He's going to be busy. All right, under eight B, September 2019 Financial Report. This is for your information. If there are any questions regarding that report, you could see that our accountant is very, very clear on trying to help us understand what's a percentage of the total that has been brought in as revenue or as expenses, if there were some associated. And I'll give you a little bit of a sense where we're moving along. At this time.
I had a question.
Our target seems to be fine.
I had a question on the emergency disaster services. The DRP funded Lee Creek Rehabilitation Project. Where are we at with that? Is there anything going to happen at all this winter?
It was supposed to happen before the snowfall and the frost came.
There's been a lot of water in the river.
Right. We didn't expect this disaster again.
Yes, I think it's somewhat at a standstill. I'm not sure what we're able to do at this point. I can look in and get back to you on exactly where we are, but it's not 100% on where we are.
Okay.
Well.
But we still have the money in.
It's an approved.
In place to do the work, right?
It's approved.
Yeah, it's been approved.
Just ever received.
It's approved. It's not in a bank, but it's approved.
Okay. And what was the, how much was approved?
That was quite a chunk of money. I don't remember now.
Phase, I'm not sure we've received.
About $2 million, something.
1.6.
Almost $2 million.
Almost $2 million so far.
Okay.
Yeah.
With this last phase that we're working on, I'm not sure what that total dollar amount is there.
Okay.
So maybe if you want to give us a little bit of an update next meeting, thank you.
That'd be great. Okay, that's it for me.
All right. So we're moving along very well, councillors. Unless you have specific questions. You had that question. Thank you councillor. Under 10, Correspondents, you have a thank you letter from the Power Committee. Under 10 B, we have the Honorable Doug Schweitzer, who has spoke about the policing costs. We had listened in to that webinar. What we learned there is that there will be no enhanced peace officer, but the enhancing would be in policing itself. And that in order to beef up the response team, they're going to use the Alberta Peace Officer, because they are just one notch below the police. They're going to use sheriffs. They're going to use fish and wildlife. And they're going to use a commercial, what?
Vehicle.
Commercial vehicle response team. So they are going to give those extensive training to bring them at the same level as the police in order to have firearms. And they talked about a credit that could be possibly given to municipality who seek enhanced policing in their town. Up to $200,000, which was rather interesting, because here's the other kicker. The equalized assessment on which the $75,000 that represented the low bracket of 15% was based on is now gone. In other words, the counties managed to have the minister agree with them that equalized assessment no longer will be used, which is a little bit of an issue for me, to tell you the truth. Because when you ask all the rural to pay for policing and take out the equalization, then it brings our requisition up, automatically up. So instead of $75,000, and the low end, who knows what it's going to be, possibly 100. And that will be the low end. So then we need to ask ourselves, is there then an appetite for the town to maybe seek for enhanced policing in our town and obtain a credit of $200,000? So there is some if, and there is a lot of unknown. So at this point, I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind and kind of follow up what's going to come down the pipeline, and give us a better sense of the future. And if we really feel that it is to our disadvantage, then I think, and to our rural town for that matter, I think we need to start to become politically involved and write letter and express why we are concerned about the model that is being proposed without the equalized assessment. So there are a lot of unknown at this point, so we need to kind of wait. But I want us But I want us to not forget to keep our ears open. And that's about as much as we really got out of that, that meeting. The rest we kind of knew. Ten C, the Canadian Federation of Independent Business. I don't know how many of you took time to read that document. It's a, it's a very interesting document. That document has been presented every year since I've been on council. And what it really does, it compares towns on a, on a basis of the population growth and of the growth of their operating spending. So the reason they're looking at those two elements is because their reasoning is that if you want sustainability, if your spending grows at a rate superior to your population growth, you are an unsustainable zone. Essentially, that's a premises of their, their discussion. And they have monitored that for the past ten years. So you can see there are some towns where the gap is huge. We are in, in a bracket where they listed us, listed us as zero population growth because I use census records, which is okay. And with a four percent increase in comparison for spending. So when you start to look at that, what does operating spending include? Well, operating spending really includes all the salaries. It includes day-to-day operations. It includes requisitions. That's about what is really in that mix. So what they were saying, they were saying that if you don't keep your reins on that figure, you are going to raise taxes at the level where you're going to have people revolting, the same as in Calgary.
Mm-hmm.
And so those are there to kind of be voices of warning for different towns. And you can see, when you start to have too big a spread, the spread is, is causing tax increase because that's the only way you can fund it. And with MSI, whatever the government is giving you. So you need to be careful with the spending. All right? So up to now, we always have fared very, very well, more or less in that zone. Where we have growth, we never had a negative growth in our spending. We never have had that in all the years I've been on council. But definitely, the spending growth over the population has been, in my opinion, still reasonable. And what it doesn't take into factor here is the exceptional circumstances of people. For example, he has some of those notices in a black, in the gray boxes. For example, for Fort McMurray, the absolute crazy increase was created because of the fire. But now that things have come back to some sorts of normal state, what I'm concerned about is that I don't see the trend going back down in the spending.
That's the Wood Buffalo region, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, but I acknowledge that. For us, for example, the cost of police, of police, policing in our town definitely has had some kind of impact. And so those are not there as an explanation, yeah, well, there is more salaries paid because of that need. So there are a few towns that don't have the reasoning as to why, except some have possibly wages that have gone out of hand, and that's a problem. So it's an interesting read, I always enjoy reading that document. And with that, we're pretty well done. Thank you very much, we kept it under an hour, we're good. So we need a motion. Councillor Drew? Thank you, all in favor?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you, enjoy the rest of your evening.